It's now five o'clock. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember McEckern.
Here.
Councilmember Negretti.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here. This is the time when we have public comments. I don't know if we have anyone that wants to address the council at this time.
Hello. My name is Tessa Hodge. I am a social work major at Cal State San Bernardino. These are two of my associates. So we are all social work majors, and we have a community outreach and advocacy project. We have gone out, we've surveyed the community to find out what needs they think need to be changed in the community. And one thing that we found out is that a lot of community members feel that there is not enough street lighting. Specifically...
What?
Street lighting is an issue. And specifically, in the southwest quadrant of Armegosa and Palmdale, which is the Mountain View Acres area. And I understand that that area is maintained by the county, but there's zero streetlights, zero, in that area, and it's a residential area. And we have gone to the county, we've gone to Edison, and we are getting the runaround. So we're hoping that we can come to you, the City Council, and maybe get some backing from you guys to help address this issue that the community feels needs, you know, that the community wants to be improved. So, that's what we're doing. So we were just here to see if we could get, you know, a minute with one or two of you afterwards, but...
Normally where you address the council and you have the three minutes, we don't discuss it because it's not on the agenda. People knew it was agendized, a lot of people may show up. But in this case, I'm going to answer. Mountain View Acres is in the unincorporated part of the city. In other words, it's not a part of the city of Victorville. It's in the county of San Bernardino. We have no jurisdiction there. If we expended money there, it would be an illegal expenditure of public funds. It's under county jurisdiction, and it's up to the county to put in streetlights or not.
Okay.
And so, a year ago, about, a little over a year ago, a year and a half, the City of Victorville formed an assessment district throughout the whole city for streetlights. And the county can do the same thing in Mountain View Acres if they want to address the issue, but we cannot.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. I mean, like I said, you know, we've been getting the runaround because we're just students. Nobody really wants to listen to us. So, we've been, you know, we were hoping we could come to you, and you guys could kind of direct us where to go, but the county, so we will harp on the county. So I thank you for that.
Can meet with one of the field reps of the supervisor, Mr. Lovinggood?
Okay.
And find out, you have a map of that area?
Yes, I do.
Clearly outlined what's in the county area, what's in the city area. And the city areas have streetlights, or streetlights will be put in. If they're not already in that area, it does not. Strictly county jurisdiction.
Okay.
And if I could just add to that, if I could make sure we get your contact information, I will be happy to have that conversation with the county supervisor and see...
Oh, my God, thank you so much. I really appreciate that. And I'll wait, and I'll give you my info after the meeting.
Give that to me, if you'd like.
Okay. All right, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to address the council? I don't see anyone else. Did you want to?
Just, not really a public comment, but just for the council's benefit, since we are in a public meeting, I can talk to all five of you at this meeting. The stoplights at Bear Valley Road and I Avenue in Hisparia-Tamarisk on the Victorville side are in a four-way flash, or flashing red, terrible timing. We have engineering staff en route to try to figure out what is going on with those and get them repaired as quickly as possible. We also have a sheriff's deputy en route to assist with traffic control because, as you can imagine, five o'clock in the evening, the timing could not be worse.
What's the location again?
Bear Valley Road and it's I Avenue. People typically see that sign on the Hisparia side, it's actually Tamarisk on the Victorville side.
Thank you. May we have declaration of closed session items by City Attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have seven items on the agenda this evening, however, several of the items are related matters. Items A and C, one for the Airport Authority, one for the City Council, is existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. It's the SEC versus Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. Item B is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D4, one potential case. That is also on behalf of the Airport Authority. Items D, F, and G are all related. They are real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 54956.8, and the parties and the properties are set forth on the agenda. And lastly, item E is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9, one potential case, and the facts and circumstances pertaining to that are set forth on the agenda. To the extent there is reportable action, we would report it at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the six o'clock regular session.
Thank you. At this time, we will recess to closed session, and we will convene at 6:00 PM. It is now six o'clock. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember McEckern.
Here.
Councilmember Negretti.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
May we have closed session announcements by our City Attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had seven items on closed session this evening, several of which are related matters. Items A and C were existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. That litigation was the SEC versus the Airport Authority. Item A was for the Airport Authority, item C was for the City Council. Item B was anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D4, one potential case. Items D, F, and G are all related. They are real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 54956.8. Real property and the parties are set forth on the agenda. And lastly, item E is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D4. And again, the facts and circumstances surrounding that litigation are set forth on the agenda. There is no reportable action at this time with respect to any of those matters.
Thank you very much. Now we will have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be delivered by Ray Jim Jubilee Community Church, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Police Chief Sam Lucia. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the city that we live in and we work in, and we thank you for the leaders that you have given us. And we just pray for them tonight, that you will give them wisdom and insight into every decision that they have to make. And again, Lord, we are grateful to you for your goodness and your grace. In Jesus' name, amen.
(Inhales) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have any presentations this evening. Therefore, we move on to, let Mr. City Clerk, do we have any agenda revisions to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor Garcia. The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council, and there are no revisions to tonight's agenda. Mayor Garcia.
Thank you. We have no appeal hearings, so we move on to public hearings. Item B1, DEV-15-00010, Proposed Amendment to the Victorville Municipal Code. I open the public hearing at this time, and I do not have any cards presently. Is there anyone that would like to come up and speak? I don't see anyone. So I close the public hearing. Do we have any comments by our council members?
Yes, yes, I do need to read the title. An Urgency Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville, California, Amending the Victorville Municipal Code to Prohibit Marijuana Cultivation, Marijuana Processing, Marijuana Delivery, Marijuana Mobile Dispensing, and Marijuana Dispensaries in the city with an environmental exemption in declaring the urgency thereof pursuant to Government Code Section 36937.
I'll move for adoption and waiver of reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item B2, PLN-15-00025, General Plan Amendment is set forth in Resolution Number 16-006, and a zone change is set forth in ordinance number 2354. I open the public hearing at this time. I do not have any cards. Therefore, I close the public hearing. Do we have any comments by... Let me see here. City Clerk, do you read the title of ordinance at this time?
I will read the title of the ordinance, and if the council wishes, I believe you can take an action to adopt the resolution and also waive further reading and introduce the ordinance. Ordinance number 2354, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville Adopting the Zone Change Portion of Case Number PLN-15-00025, A Zone Change From PC Public Civic and R3 High Density Residential to R1 Single Family Residential With a Negative Declaration on Property Located West of Rabina Road, East of and Abutting Monte Vista-Aster Road, North of and Abutting Nyack Road, and South of La Mesa Road.
So, what, actually, the council covers all three items? Negative Dec, Resolution, and Ordinance?
If that is your motion, absolutely, and it would include waive further reading of the ordinance.
I would have motioned to approve all three of those items as recommended by staff.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to consent calendar. Consent calendar can be approved, item C1 through C8, unless there is a motion that needs to be, an item that needs to be pulled for discussion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull item C3, please.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull item C4, please.
Councilmember Kennedy, did you want to discuss C3?
Sure.
We want to approve the other...
You could take a vote to approve the other four items first, if you wanted to, and then address both of those two items.
Okay. Can we take a motion now to approve the other four items?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
C3, Madam Mayor, the, I realize it's on a consent calendar, I think it deserves a little more attention than that. This is our decision to rescind a modification to the original joint powers agreement?
Yes. What you're doing is you're rescinding a prior approval given by this body back, I believe in 2010, to approve a revision to the joint powers agreement which governed the Victor Valley Waste Water Treatment Authority. In addition, at that time, there were three other agreements that were affected. There was a sludge agreement, there was a service agreement, and there was a reclaimed water agreement. So, what this proposed amendment at that time did was essentially incorporate provisions from all of those documents into one document. However, it had some provisions that I think now require further discussion, given where the City of Victorville has come in connection with its own industrial...
And those three items, we have settled and resolved since then, so this...
Yes, two of those items have been resolved. The service agreement would still be in effect if this agreement never gets approved. And your approval of this agreement previously was actually contingent, your execution of it was contingent on the other members approving it. It had never, it never got approved by anybody else. So my concern is you have a document out there that was previously approved that has never been signed. I would just assume that you rescind that prior action.
The point is, we approved this back in 2010, thinking that it was a desirable, valuable change. Nobody else on the VWR board agreed with us. They have not approved it, so there's no point for our approval to remain in place. So this is to rescind that approval, and I'll move to approve that item.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Mayor, with respect to item C4, this is the, what is known as the TRED agreement, but in essence deals with the Northern Triangle or the Gateway Specific Plan, and a lot of this was contingent upon redevelopment being in place, and as the state has done away with that, obviously, we need to look to move into a different direction. One of the reasons I wanted this pulled was because there just needs to be acknowledgement of that, and the understanding that we would still love to work with Express West and the developers out there, assuming they can secure the financing and build the train, and this in no way would discourage them from moving in that direction. This is just a recognition of the facts that exist today, and the lack of redevelopment as a tool for us to assist them in that process. So, with that, I would move for approval of C4.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to written communications. Item D1, Annual Agreement for HVAC Maintenance and Repair Services, Echo Engineer Services. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the City Council award the contract to Echo Engineered Services in the base annual amount of $26,545.
Move approval. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D2, 2015-16 Supplemental Law Enforcement Services Fund, SLESF, COPS Front Line Law Enforcement Allocation, AB 3229 Grant. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the City Council ratify the expenditure plan for the SLESF allocation for 2015, and authorize the city manager or his designee to process all documents required for the program administration.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D3, Award of Construction Contract for Replacement of Two Compressed Natural Gas CNG Dispensers Under Project ES-16-048. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the City Council approve the award of a construction contract to Fueling and Service Technologies, Inc., Fast Tech, in the not-to-exceed amount of $143,554 for Option 1, the replacement of two compressed natural gas CNG dispensers for fiscal year 2015-2016.
I have a question, Madam Mayor. The indication is that there are sufficient funds in the capital improvement budget, apparently from the CNG Enterprise Fund, so incoming funds that were making off the two in...
That is correct.
And how much money is in the fund? Well, never mind. As long as there's sufficient funds to pay this, and it requires no additional funds from the general fund.
That's correct.
It's all on you, now, thank you.
Move approval. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D4, Mojave River Walk Final Design Agreement with Delta Planning and Design Amendment Number 1 for Environmental Permitting. Madam Clerk, while you read the recommendation, it looks like we have two?
Yes. The recommendation is that the City Council appropriate an additional $280,050 from Fund 230, the Local Transportation Fund. Is this the same fund to build local streets and roads?
No. The Local Transportation Fund specifically cannot be used to build streets and roads. Only non-vehicular portions of our infrastructure, such as sidewalks, bike lanes, bike paths, and transit.
So by approving these funds, it doesn't affect our ability at all to build or repair or maintain our local streets and roads?
Any effect would only be positive in that a small portion of the roadway that would be a bike path can be spent out of this fund rather than coming from those other funds.
Thank you.
There's a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D5, Bear Valley Road Bridge Over BNSF Railroad Amendment Number 1 to Agreement with Dock and Engineering. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the City Council approve Amendment Number 1 to a Consultant Professional Services Provider Agreement with Dock and Engineering increasing the contract amount by $44,589 and extending the time until December 31, 2017.
Madam Mayor, I actually have a question on this, and if we could get Brian to come down on the... Brian, as you know, I'm intimately aware and know so much about this project, as well as others in or around that area, and Doug as well. But my question is, you know, we're amending this agreement. When are we actually going to see this actually done? I mean, it's frustrating to me that you continue to ask us to, you know, amend agreements, do things to the design contract. I just want to know, when are we actually going to go to construction on this?
We had a meeting recently with BNSF, and we've also consulted with Caltrans, who are the ones that authorized the funds because it's a federally funded project. And our best estimate right now is in the summer of 2017, construction will start. The reason for that is these funds have to come through local assistance, Caltrans. They only release the funds in phases. They won't authorize construction funds until after you've completed all the designing right away, and then it has to be programmed according to their timing. So, in short, we're kind of at the mercy of when the funds are released by Caltrans. The BNSF review probably will take at least nine months before we can get the permit. That probably will not be the critical schedule. We had a meeting with them recently, which was a good meeting, but they're also on their own timeframe. But I think the main constraint will be the federal funds through Caltrans.
Okay, so, to the larger question, and if I would go north of there a little bit, and assuming we own agreement in place, and we can build the Green Tree Extension and the bridge over the railroad, understanding, when we started this process on Bear Valley Road, when did we start the process?
On this bridge?
Yeah.
This...
The, just the expansion of the bridge. The bridge has been built...
Yeah.
...for, I don't know, how long. So, when did we start the process of expanding the bridge, and where are we at now? How long has that been?
I don't remember exactly when we started the environmental, because we had to first get an environmental document cleared, and then move into the design phase. And I believe that has been about two years, I think, over two years ago, when that started. The design is moving well along. It's towards 95% design. But that's not the critical path. It's really the funding. The funding is the biggest challenge, getting through Caltrans. In the old days, they used to release all the funding in one package, and they stopped doing that a few years back. So, they're only releasing it in phases now, and that is slowing projects down.
Okay. I just, I think it's important for us to understand that, assuming the best of all worlds, and we did get a loan agreement approved to build the Green Tree Extension and the bridge over the railroad, understanding what this project and the delays that we have seen here as a result of Caltrans and BNSF, I mean, the reality is, we're looking at, just for those permits and the ability to build over that railroad, a minimum of two years, if not longer.
I would say yes.
Is that a fair assessment?
I would say yes, because the project itself could take a year. They don't allow you to do overhead work the fourth quarter of the year. That's just a BNSF constraint, but I would say that'd be about right. Thank you.
I think we built the Niskuale interchange faster than that, didn't we?
Well, once we got approval, yes, but it took us 20 to 30 years to get to that point.
Well, that, yeah. Two questions, Brian. Bear Valley Road is the border between Victorville and Hisparia. We're doing both sides. Is that portion of the bridge in Hisparia, are they kicking in on this?
Well, because the city limit's not on the center of the road, the city limit's on the section line, and because the road curves to the north...
The bridge is actually all in the city.
It's all in our jurisdiction. So we would have to come up with the matching funds.
And... And can you give us some idea of what's going to happen to traffic flow on that bridge while the construction is being done? Are you going to have to close lanes?
We figured out a way so we don't have to close any through lanes. They'll remain open, because the bridge is going to be widened on both sides. So it'll be done in stages. We'll widen on one side, then we'll do the other side.
Okay, thank you.
Did we make a motion?
No, there hasn't been a motion made yet.
Well, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D6, Selection of Officers for the City Selection Committee and a Primary Member of the San Bernardino County Local Agency Formation Commission, LAF CO. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
There is no specific recommendation on this item, Mayor Garcia. This will be a decision of the City Council.
Madam Mayor, I ask that this item be placed on the agenda. There was a letter from the Clerk of the Board of the San Bernardino County Supervisors. The City Selection Committee, it was all the cities, elected individuals on LAFCO. That board has two special district members, two city members, two county members. Cities have an alternate member, and for the longest time, there was an attempt to have an East Valley, West Valley desert member, or a trade of some sort, where the desert would be represented as a designated member or the alternate member, or... We have none of that at this point in time. And I don't know if that's an issue for the Mayor's Committee, but I put it on here because I'd like to see the desert represented. Most of the cities down below, they have no place to annex. Their city borders are built out. Desert cities are wide open. There's annexation activities. I'm not sure that we will have any in the near future, but Hisparia, Apple Valley, Barstow, Victorville, all could have those in the future. It would certainly be advantageous to the mountain desert cities to have a representative of mountain desert. I have no one in mind. I'm not promoting anyone at this point in time. I think it's important, however, that there be a discussion, primarily with the other cities. If they would rather see the, all the members down below, that's fine also, but I think they would agree, once brought to their attention, that the desert cities need to get together and support a member from the council from the desert to be on the Local Agency Formation Commission. And so this opens a discussion, but there is a very short period of time. I'm not, I can't remember. Oh, well, they make the selection in March, so it's coming up really quickly.
Is it something that we can discuss at a mayor's meeting?
I'm not sure when the next mayor's meeting is in Barstow, as I recall.
I believe it's at Atlanta.
We have the one in Barstow. I think Atlanta is next.
But I do not know the date at this point. They have not sent anything out on that.
I forgot to bring that. I do have, remember, we wrote down the dates?
Right, we did.
And I believe the next meeting will be in Atlanta, but I don't have the date.
Is it a monthly meeting, or?
It's a monthly meeting.
It's a monthly meeting.
Should be coming up sometime in February, then.
The deadline for submitting letters of interest and statements of qualifications to the Clerk of the Board is Monday, February 8.
What?
Monday, February 8 is the deadline.
Madam Mayor, if I might, I would concur with Mayor Protem Cox's comments. I think it's important that we do have someone from the desert represented. I think we have gone down this path before. It just hasn't worked, for whatever reason, had other people represented us, but it's mostly been, if I remember correctly, it's the county supervisor. Might know better than I. I'm just trying to remember exactly who's represented us on that. But it's interesting how so many people in the valley can so influence what happens here in the desert, because LAFCO and most of the decisions that they make influence what we do up here. As Mr. Cox alluded to, a lot of the decisions that LAFCO makes are with respect to areas that are within the county's jurisdiction. Much of the valley areas are already incorporated. So I think it's appropriate that we have representation. Just don't know exactly what you want to do here tonight, because you don't have a whole lot of time. So would you like us to nominate you to serve in that position?
I'm not running for the position, but I really strongly believe that we need someone from the desert. I didn't realize it was such a short period of time. I would just simply, our mayor will, our mayor, one of us will attend the meeting and be a voting member on this issue, apparently, very shortly. Is there any member of the council that's interested in sitting on the Local Agency Formation Commission? Unfortunately, anyone have the time. I'll volunteer.
Are they monthly meetings?
Pardon?
Monthly meetings, or quarterly, or?
They've been so far, as I recall.
LAFCO is a monthly meeting, yes.
Jim, if you have the time, I'd like to go ahead and nominate you to put your name in the hat and, you know, hopefully Gloria or yourself can attend that meeting where they ultimately decide it. But I think it would be appropriate for you to be on that commission. So I'll make that motion.
I second it.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
I don't, I don't know if other cities have nominated someone. I don't want to get into a contest where the desert loses out. And if you'll notice, the primary member, Ranch Kukumanga, primary member of City of Highland, alternate member of City of Fontana, end up where we don't have sufficient votes to get anyone. So I'd request that the city clerk, if it's appropriate, notify the other desert cities that we have an individual, send whatever required notice there is to the Select Committee.
The Clerk of the Board actually sends out on February 11th all candidate materials to all of the cities.
Right.
Once they receive the letters of interest and statements of qualifications.
Well, and, I mean, I think to his point, and whenever you have your mayor's meeting, it would be appropriate, if there had been other members of the High Desert Coalition that have put their names in, perhaps you all can agree upon whoever we should have up here.
Yes, yeah.
I think that's what we've tried to do. I don't think we should be fighting against each other.
No, we don't.
I think what we should be doing is working together and protecting our own interests up here. So hopefully, when you do have the mayor's meeting, you can have that conversation.
Thank you. That's exactly the intent.
Yeah, that's a very good idea.
And support the desert.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, then we move on to item D7. Or did we need to make a motion? No, that's just at the discretion of the City Council.
Yeah, I, Madam Mayor, I ask that this be put on the agenda. There was an item that came before us, where there was a small store that wanted to sell beer and wine, along with a convenience store with groceries. And under the rules that we have adopted, that they could not do so, although there are two service stations at the intersection that sell beer and wine, a pharmacy that sells hard liquor, beer and wine. And at one point, in that center, there was a large grocery store that sold liquor, beer, and wine. It seemed odd that we couldn't have some form of regulation that restricted what they could sell, because we don't want the little bottles and we don't want the hard liquor. But it seemed appropriate that they be able to sell beer and wine with the convenient goods, and especially the groceries. I voted to prohibit it, because the rules are written that way, and we can't ignore our rules. We just cannot. But if the council is in agreement that that was the right decision, that ends it. But if they feel that it's kind of odd that a large grocery store can come in, or even a larger convenience market, and sell beer and wine, but these people can't, that number is somewhat of an arbitrary number. And I would like, this matter, to go back to the Planning Commission, to consider that ordinance. See if, in fact, based upon experience, evidence, some proof of some kind, that they should not sell beer and wine at that convenience store, or they could with some kind of a special permit, or that the square footage could be amended. It would be my request that that be looked at. Right now, they're simply locked out, but somebody could move in next door, very similar, selling the same groceries, same goods, but make the store larger, and they can sell beer and wine. I'm sure there's a reason for it. It seemed rather discriminatory, and I felt that it should be readdressed. That's the reason I asked that it be put on the agenda, to see if the City Council is in agreement or not. If they are, the request would be to forward it back to the planning staff and Planning Commission. If they feel it's appropriate as is, that ends it.
As I recall, we, what drove that decision was the over-concentration issue. Am I right?
Well, it was, and I was initially was under the impression that this was an ABC mandate, but it's not. ABC had no problem with it. It's our ordinance.
Yeah, I talked to ABC, and they told me that they didn't have a problem issuing the license, but it's up to the city. The city's the one that regulates.
So it takes us back to the question of whether there's an over-concentration, number one, and if there is, is it okay? I mean, is it the over-concentration that's driving this whole discussion, matter of council policy?
There's two items. Initially, when I looked at it, I thought it was the over-concentration, although the other areas that appear to have more concentration, I think it boiled down to the size, the square footage of the convenience store.
Yeah, there's actually two issues, just to clarify for you, Mayor Protem. One is over-concentration. That is why it would be prohibited. If it were ancillary use, so smaller square footage of a bigger primary grocery store type or that type of business, then it would not be considered a, quote, "liquor store." One potential option that the council wished to consider it is that there are actually two different permitting options. One is for beer, wine, and liquor. Mr. Cox referred to that a little bit. There isn't a separate section for just beer and wine sales only that I don't know, I was not at the Planning Commission meeting. I don't know if they looked at the possibility of splitting that up to where only a beer and wine store may be allowed. I don't know.
Madam Mayor, and to our city manager's comments, I think, having previously served on the Planning Commission, I mean, obviously, there's a, there's a good reason we have this over-concentration issue in place and why we considered it previously. So if that wasn't taken into account with respect to just separating beer and wine versus beer, wine, and liquor, I'd be more than adequately in favor of having the Planning Commission looking, look at it. I think the point is, is that we made a decision based upon what the Planning Commission brought to us previously, and I think that, that decision was sound. I don't have a problem with them looking at it on a go-forward basis. I don't want to revisit something that they already decided upon. I think, you know, they made a sound decision based upon the municipal code that we have in place today and that we approved, and we upheld that. If we want to change that, or we want to amend that to allow for different types of uses, which would suggest that you could allow beer and wine in one type of facility, beer, wine, and liquor in another type of facility, I think that that's appropriate use and a decision that the Planning Commission should ponder and make a recommendation to the City Council on. I don't think that we should go back in time and try to undo what they have already recommended and we've already upheld. So what I am in favor of, and I think what is in the spirit of Mayor Protem Cox's recommendation, is that it be looked at, because there are differing scenarios and things, options, and things we ought to, we ought to be looking at. And so to that point, obviously, it would be appropriate that the Planning Commission look at it.
Well, am I understanding correctly that there is a big store, small store issue here? That if the big store is in place, that closes out a small store?
No, a large store that has a small square footage associated with alcohol sales is not considered a, quote, "liquor store." So a grocery store that also has beer and wine and liquor sales, it would not be affected by the current ordinance.
So it doesn't factor into the over-concentration issue?
No, it does not. It does not. This is for smaller stores that sell liquor, as essentially their primary course of...
You know, and I think something that the Planning Commission ought to look at, and this is an interesting dynamic that we've been dealing with here in Victorville, but as grocery stores have closed down, Albertson's, Ralph's, Albertson's I think of, Amethyst and Bear Valley, Ralph's at Palmdale and Amethyst, these are stores that sold beer, wine, and liquor, and they no longer exist. Yet, if you included them, you could say that it's over-concentrated, but in reality, it's not. So, I mean, we live in a different world today, and I, that's, I guess, the reason why I'm in favor of the Planning Commission looking at this, because it doesn't, you know, you don't have the grocery stores that were there 10 years ago. And we've seen so many of them close down, and so the availability of what normally was there is not there anymore.
And we, by consensus, give staff direction to take this issue back to the Planning Commission with?
Absolutely. It might be helpful, if you're so inclined, to give your opinions on it, that the Planning Commission could perhaps discuss. I mean, I know that they studied it. I don't know if they studied bifurcating the two separate options or not. I don't mean to indicate that they didn't, if that's the way that sounded earlier. But if the council is interested in making a change, it would be helpful to express that. Or if you'd just rather have them take a closer look, take a second look.
I don't know if I'm interested in making a change. I guess I'd like someone to take a look at.
Okay. Now, that's why you have the commission to deeper study these issues.
Well, and I would agree, and I, my previous comments would apply. Obviously, things... Yeah, if they make a recommendation that we should change things, I think it's appropriate for them to look at, and that's what they're...
And I, I agree. Excuse me, and I think it's important, while they study that, that they make the distinction in alcoholic beverages between the hard liquor, what I refer to as hard liquor, and beer and wine. Not in reading all of the documents that was submitted, it appears that the ordinance that's adopted by the council cover it, but in the discussion of the Planning Commission, it doesn't appear that they made that separation and distinction.
Is that a motion to send it back to Planning Commission, then?
Yes, there would be a motion to send it back to Planning.
Since I brought the matter to the council, I would so move with the understanding that that'd be accompanied with all of the input from the City Council members.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D8, Appointment of Two Council Members to Serve on the Housing and Community Development HCD Grants Review Committee. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council appoint two council members to serve with staff on the Housing and Community Development Grants Review Committee.
I volunteer to be.
Who currently sits on this committee?
I did for the last two years. I have.
Sit with you.
Last time was Mr. Negretti.
Sure. Thank you.
I would then, I would move that the council appoint our mayor, Gloria Garcia, and council member, Negretti.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D9, Purchase and Sale Agreement Out of Park Sign Properties. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency Board of Directors and City Council adopt Resolution Numbers RSA-16-002 Board of Directors and city council adopt resolution numbers RSA 16-002 and 16-006 respectively, approving the purchase and sale agreement by and between the successor agency on behalf of the Victorville Redevelopment Agency and the city of Victorville, and approve an additional appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $10,400.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to public comments. And I do have one card.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Jennifer Cusack, and I work for Southern California Edison. I'm your new government affairs representative, replacing Nancy Jackson. I'm not new to the desert, but I am new to Victorville, so I look forward to working with you. Already, I've worked with your staff, and we're working on some pending issues, and I just welcome an opportunity to hear any concerns you may have, either directly or through your city manager. And I look forward to working with the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that would... Do we have any other cards, or anyone else that needs to address the council?
No, we do not.
No? City manager?
Staff has no additional comments at this time.
Council members?
I have two. But it's my turn. At the last council meeting, we had an individual, a little irate at the council, because they had, quote, written several letters, including the individual sitting on each side of the mayor. And we had not responded, and I was rather taken back, because I have a policy of responding. Whether I can do anything, whether I agree or not is not the point. We're here to represent the public. And I indicated that I did not receive such a communication. I asked staff to check. They did. There had been no written communication or verbal communication to me on that issue. And it was a matter of a piece of property on the south side of Palmdale Road. I looked at that, and with our rules that the city has adopted, if someone comes in to rent the property or use the property, I think because it's been vacant or vacated or both, it has to be brought up to, infrastructure has to be brought up to code. If you have a use on any of those properties along Palmdale Road that are vacant and do not have curb gutter or driveway approach, they should be brought up to code. In this particular instance, however, there's a large drainage facility. For drainage that does not emanate on the property, but crosses the property and also crosses on the adjoining property, and drainage, if you look at the property and look at adjoining properties, has been diverted to a drainage facility, which would appear, in looking at it, that it would be an unfair burden for this particular property owner to have to widen and prove the drainage facility, because it's not for that property. In fact, there could be a runoff for the property, or the property could retain any surface water. And I would ask that the city council look at those kinds of things when people make requests, to see if there is a responsibility of the city, or one of the agencies of the city, to assist a property owner in the converting it from vacant to use, because it's in our interest if the vacant properties can be used, if they can be improved. I know that any piece of property can be improved if you put enough money into it. On the other hand, it seems to me that we fully understand what a property owner should do as their responsibility for their property. But what happens when we require the property owner to make improvements that are what appear to be the city's responsibility, or the flood control district, or an agency of the city's responsibility? I, we've not discussed that. Apparently, based upon staff information to me, there are no conditions that they can bring to the council indicating that the city or some other entity has a role to play in that. It seems to me that fairness would dictate that we would look at that to determine when those kinds of property owners, properties exist, and it's unfair to make the property owner make all the improvements, that there be some form of assistance or some form of jointly paying for the improvements when the improvements benefit a greater area than the property itself. I really would like to have the city council, maybe it requires a report from the staff on this area or similar areas. And the second thing is I am just bombarded with the condition of our interchange, Palmdale Road, and a half a mile in both directions. It is horrible. And when is that going to be overlaid by the city, by the state, or a combination of both agencies?
With regard to the first issue, yeah, we have engineering staff here. We can take a look and at least bring something back in the form of a memo, or if an agenda item is needed, we can bring it back for public discussion. Just to give a little bit more background on that, with regard to the Palmdale Road, the last time I spoke with the Caltrans superintendent, they had done something to the road, I'm not even sure what to call it, ground it up. For some reason, some sort of first phase of repaving it, but didn't have the money to finish the repaving, so they striped it all ground up. The indication at that time was they were about a year away, so I would hope that sometime this calendar year, we will get that, they will get that repaved. I will reach out to him again tomorrow morning to see if I can bring an update to the council as soon as possible.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Just a reminder, for those of you that are in the audience tonight, we do have the State of the City tomorrow morning at the Victor Valley Chamber of Commerce meeting over at the Hilton Garden Inn, and we've got some good information to share with you, as well as, which looks back on the last year, but looks forward on what we're getting ready to do. Would like to compliment Brian and staff, as well as our contractor, with respect to the Spring Valley Parkway and the repavement project that went on out there. If you haven't driven over that way, believe it or not, a lot of our residents, even though they don't live in Spring Valley, like, use that Parkway, especially the entrance to get in and out of the college, to excelsior, to businesses around there, and/or other educational facilities. And it's just a testimony to something that took eight years to get done. Sorry, I had to say that. The other thing I just would like to have the council reconsider and have brought back before us, Brian, and if you could kind of pull this back up and reengage Caltrans, reengage the city of Asperia. We had probably about four or five years ago, looked at the realignment of the Bear Valley Road off-ramp coming northbound, as well as getting on to the I-15, going northbound, and basically moving that up onto the, onto the bridge further up, so that it allowed traffic to, you know, better flow through there. We actually sat at this dais, and it was 5-0 on Victorville's side, and it was 3-2 against on Asperia's side, so it never went anywhere. Caltrans had basically committed money to that, and I think we ought to revisit that if the money's still there. So I would at least like to know where that's at, if that's a possibility. I continue to see the stacking of traffic on Bear Valley Road coming northbound, getting off on Bear Valley Road, and also just the problems with traffic between Mariposa and in that bridge, which ultimately, either people are coming off of or getting on to I-15 northbound. Obviously, if we could move that up a couple hundred yards, that would obviously relieve some of that traffic congestion. So I think it would be who of us to revisit that. So if you could bring that back to us, I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, just a couple things, Madam Mayor. The Audit Committee, the mayor and I, or the city council representatives on that committee met today with the auditors, reviewed the draft of our CAFR, and approved the draft with some considerable discussion, actually. And I expect it will be presented at a meeting in March. March 1st. And I'd like to compliment the auditors. It was a spinoff from the former audit firm. It's the first year we've used this firm, but it's same group of people, so they had experience with it, and they did a nice job moving through, very complimentary of staff. We'll hear some good things about staff, bad things about legal fees, but good things about staff. The other thing, just to kind of bring you up to date, not our esteemed city attorney.
Bring to our city attorney?
No, I'm not. No, I'll leave that one alone. The other thing I want to mention, try to keep the council updated on developments at BBWR, where I sit as a city's representative. Almost coming around to a point of view that my job is only partially to represent the city, it's more to protect the city from the decisions made by that board. We produce about 60% of the flows and about 60% of the revenues, and we have 25%, one of four boats. So a great deal of money gets spent in that organization, and we pay for the bulk of it and have the weakest boat there. Not because I'm weak, but 25% is 25%. Part of what we discussed was the mid-year budget review at the last meeting, and it, we illuminated the fact that we, the city of Victorville, have diverted about a million gallons a day of our sewage to our treatment plant, the industrial wastewater treatment plant at the base. That has done a couple of things. It has taken about a million dollars a year of revenues from BBWR, so we're not spending it there, we're processing that sewage at our plant. However, the good news is, it has freed up about a million gallons a day of capacity for that plant, so it's about 8%, 9% capacity. Part of their decision to build a treatment, a subregional plant in Apple Valley and a subregional plant in Asperia, to the tune of at least $80 million, we don't know what the final number's going to be, because it's not built yet, but it's right now planning that those two will cost $80 million, which we will spend 60% of. Part of the reason for those two plants was so that they could improve the capacity at the main plant. And by our diversion, we largely solved that problem for them. There is some unhappiness about the fact that the revenues are also being diverted. It's an ongoing issue, they're spending a lot of money over there for a number of capital projects, and we're paying for the bulk of it, and my concern is that this council, and I suppose the citizens of Victorville, be aware of what's happening there. I'd like to say I'm in full support of all the decisions and haven't been, but they are doing what I'm sure they believe is best for the region. I don't know what else I want to say about that.
Thank you. Anyone else? If there's nothing else, then this meeting is adjourned.
I think they are.